Good evening, everybody. For the record, 5:15 PM, Thursday, November 10th, 2022. Time for the regular meeting of Wenatchee City Council. As we always do, we start with a pledge to our flag. Councilmember Harold, would you lead us?
Yes. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Harold. Roll call this evening. We have all seven councilmembers present with us this evening. Our first item on our agenda would be citizen comment. This would be a time when any member of the audience would wish to address the city council on something that's on tonight's agenda or not on tonight's agenda. We do have one public hearing item tonight. That's regarding our property tax ordinance. So if you're here to discuss the property tax ordinance, we will take public hearing, our testimony during that time period. If you're here for any other item or just want to address the city council, we ask that you come up, give us your name and address for the record. We'll give you three minutes or so. Anybody want to come up? Yes, sir. Come on up. Yep, sit there. Wave to everybody at home. Name an address for the record.
My name is Lee McNamara. I have a mailing address of 5426 at the post office here. And I am here to discuss the homeless issue. Well, not so much to discuss, but make some proposals. Recently, there's been another BB gun shooting, for one. There have been acts of violence committed against some of the homeless here recently. That combined with the city's war on homeless over the last few years has really caused some issues. Now, I understand, you know, as businessmen and businesspeople here, it's not good to have the homeless around like they have been. And really, the problem goes further than Wenatchee. If you, you know, get in the news and look around, other cities have it a lot worse than we do. And we can expect that here, too. So what I would like to say is, with some good planning, I think Wenatchee could do a good job of serving up a new way to handle this situation, as well as some other things, too. But right now, it's just about the homeless. I want to make myself available to everyone to handle this, whether it's in a council forum, whether it's in a committee forum, or, you know, in offices somewhere with people who want to step in. I've been speaking with some local businesspeople. I could name names, but I don't think that's really important now. I think I'll just kind of close with just some simple things to reduce the footprint of the homeless on Wenatchee. You know, you don't want the retirees you're trying to attract here to see a bunch of homeless people in the park making a mess. You don't. So just by some simple coordination of, say, the meal times of Lighthouse Hospitality House, or Wenatchee Rescue Mission now, and Salvation Army, you know, the way it's set up now, you've got people going all the way into town this way, one way, and then all the way back, and then all the way back again, making them visible, you know, three times when they might only be seen once. Simple things. Wenatchee is one of the only towns I've ever seen without day lockers. If day lockers were provided, they wouldn't have the backpacks and looking like they're dragging everything they own with them. Even some bathroom facilities that are a little better than what we have would reduce the stench, if you will. Now, that's going to be a problem because the ones we have now have been shut down due to vandalism. I can't blame you for locking the doors, but it's only going to make problems worse. But while I'm here, I have some solutions for that as well. But that will take some time. Sluggish at first, yes, but I've got some ideas that I think could really roll. And I don't know where the sign-up sheet is, but like I said, I'll make myself available.
So do you have a cell number?
I do.
So why don't you either leave it with Glenn or our chief of police, and we will get in contact with you, and we will find a time to sit down and talk about some of your ideas and how to push some of those forward if it works? We've got no problem doing that.
Thank you. But finally, there's just like one or two of them out there that are really making the problem, and something needs to be done about this, Israel, they call him...
We know who he is, yeah.
Okay. This guy is off the hook.
Yep.
And, yeah, and he's running around...
All three of those back there guys are nodding their heads, so they all...
There's a couple others as well, but...
They all know. So get your phone number with our folks over there, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lee. Anybody else wish to address the council on something that's either on tonight's agenda or not? Seeing no other takers. Our first item on tonight's agenda would be the consent items, which includes approving of tonight's agenda, vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings. I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda, the vouchers, and minutes from the previous meetings.
Second.
Motion of my councilmember Hufaker, second by councilmember Cuevas, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda, the vouchers, and our minutes from our previous meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a number of action items tonight, four items. The first is regarding appointments to the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. And then we have a special guest, Mr. Lyle Markhart here with us, former councilmember.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Dave Erickson, Parks and Recreation Director for the city. This evening, I'd like to request approval of Resolution 2022-24, which would reappoint this guy to the Arts Rec and Park Commission, position one, with a term expiration date of December 31st of 2025. I'm sure Lyle is ready to give his hour-long dissertation on why he should be on the...
Should we discuss the merits? I'm not sure we should discuss the merits of Lyle in a public meeting. Should we go into exec session for that, or are we okay doing that publicly? I don't know.
Hey, thanks a lot, Lyle, for stepping up and continuing on, and especially when you're in District Two, it's most impressive that we get great representation.
What district are you in?
I'm gonna, I want to make a motion for the city council to approve Resolution Number 2022-24, reappointing Lyle Markhart to position of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission.
Second.
Motion of my councilmember Poyer, second by councilmember Kulas, to adopt Resolution 2022-24, reappointing Lyle Markhart to position one of the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. Any discussion?
I just want to say thank you for your effort and your commitment, what you do. And I know that, and I've seen your work through the parks, I appreciate that, Lyle. You're an asset to the, to the, to the committee here. Thank you.
Here, here.
You are Wenatchee's volunteer. We appreciate you. You are Wenatchee's volunteer. We appreciate you.
I'd use Wenatchee's bowler. Mr. Bowlen?
Yeah, I still bowl in twice a week. Not getting any better, but...
He's also on the museum board, and what do we, oh, collections committee. It's part of the museum as well. So he doesn't really have...
He's also president of my Lions Club.
Yeah. He is the volunteer of the year, isn't he? All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lyle, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks for all your work. Thank you, David.
I appreciate it.
Enjoy your weekend, Dave. I hope you get one. You getting one?
Even tomorrow.
I heard that, so...
Saturday at Lincoln, so maybe not.
All right. Thanks, David. All right. Code enforcement board. Glenn, are you going to do that?
Yes, sir.
Not yet, no. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Pleased to have a suggested motion for you to reappoint code enforcement members James Snyder, Amber Hallberg, and Luis Gonzalez to the code enforcement board. They're doing great work on behalf of the city and would stand for any questions you might have. Before two-year, new two-year terms.
Any questions for Glenn? If not, these are all reappointments?
Correct.
Your Honor, I will move for city council to approve the Resolution Number 2022-27, designating the reappointments of James Snyder, Amber Hallberg, and Luis Gonzalez to the code enforcement board for two-year terms ending December 31st, 2024.
Second.
Motion of my councilmember Harold, second by councilmember Cuevas, to adopt Resolution 2022-27, designated the reappointments of James Snyder, Amber Hallberg, and Luis Gonzalez to the code enforcement board for a two-year term ending December 31st, 2024. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Lodging Tax Advisory Committee reappointments.
Your Honor, I will recuse myself on this item.
Okay. So noted. Councilmember Harold is recusing herself.
Good evening, city council. Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. The item before you is a Resolution 2022-28 for the reappointment of members to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. So these are renewals for Kristen Lodge with the Shalamp U.D., Cody Beeson with the Hilton Garden Inn, Mark Miller at the Town Toyota Center, and Miguel Cuevas at the Residence Inn. The LTAC committee reviewed this at their last meeting in September and recommended renewing their appointments. It would be valid through December 31st of 2024, if approved. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions for Laura? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2022-28, reappointing members to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for two-year terms.
Second.
Motion of my councilmember Kula, second by councilmember Hornby, to adopt Resolution 22-28, reappointing members to the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee for two-year terms ending December 31st, 2024, both being Kristen Lodge, Cody Beeson, and Mark Miller, and Miguel Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Six in favor, and zero against, and one abstention.
Thank you.
Glenn, updated contract agreement with Wenatchee Rescue Mission.
Get our presentation up in just a second here. I met this week with the Columbia River Local Homeless Housing Task Course for Wenatchee and East Wenatchee, and we have before you an action item to make an amendment to previous authorization that you did in September. If you recall, that you authorized Safe Park Facilities 1 and 2, and then also an outreach program, and also a future 45 pallet shelter units for individual emergency shelter that will be in place in April or May of next year. Since that time, originally, the thought was that the second Safe Park would most likely not occur until next year at some point, but we've been successful in locating a second Safe Park this year, which is great because of the need out there. So there's a need to amend the contract amount because we are starting earlier. Additionally, we've had time to work in more detail on the contract itself and work with the grantee with Wenatchee Rescue Mission, and we found that there was a shortfall in the 24-hour management for the second Safe Park. The first Safe Park had four housing managers for the management of the site. The second had three, so that needs to be corrected so that we have oversight 24 hours a day. The second correction was in working with the applicant and in looking at best practices for low-barrier shelters. We looked at needing an additional staff member evenings and weekends when those 45 additional units, which can house up to 90 people, occur at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission. The applicant concurred, as did the task force, and so there'd be an additional, there's a proposal for an additional outreach position to take, to be hired in April of next year for those new 45 units. An additional change is that we had the original 20-bed low-barrier shelter contract that the council authorized and was entered into, but the concept here is to wrap that existing contract into one master contract for all of the facilities and also extend it through December 2024. And since that time, we've also had a real positive change in that instead of just 20 beds, it's now 40. They've converted 20 additional beds to low-barrier facilities. And then also, along with that, a recommendation by the finance director to change the nature of that grant. Instead of $50,000 a year, to change it to being personnel costs and additionally add a 12% overhead. And I'll get into what that 12% overhead means. So the proposal is to lump that existing contract and change it to cover 40 beds, which is exciting, gives us more additional capacity, which we need for very little additional cost. The total staffing costs with these changes comes to $1,777,280.68. The 12% overhead there here is, in the original proposal, there were fixed capital costs and soft costs that occurred every month with a facility. What, in looking at those costs, it was typically under, roughly under 12%. What the finance director recommended was that an easier way for both the grantee and grantor to administer that is, given that those costs can be justified and are typical, just apply an overhead to the personnel costs. So add additional 12% to that fixed amount for personnel costs every month. That saves a lot of time. They'll still have to keep records because we're going to be monitoring and looking at performance standards and looking at their books occasionally, as we're required to, but they won't have to turn in every single receipt for these components. Saves them a lot of time, and it saves our staff a lot of time. So if you look at the total proposal, we also had the ADA bathroom upgrade, which was previously approved, and you put that all together. The previous authorization was $1,529,127. The proposed change is $2,090,554. So we would propose that you consider authorizing the mayor to enter into that contract with the Wenatchee Rescue Mission. I just have a quick visual for, I think most of you are familiar with where the second Safe Park is. This is just a quick visual. They're up to about an acre of usable area, which is great for operations, 300 by 160, and it is in effect today. So we'd recommend you consider this motion for authorizing the mayor to enter into this contract, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So at Finance Committee today, we went through the spreadsheet, so you can see sort of what our homeless funds are doing. And you can even see with the proposed purchase of the property out there, the lowest balance we get to is around $900,000. And it will grow through the end of 2024 up to a couple million bucks. So we still have the ability to do other programs as things come up, which I think things are going to come up, whether it's some form of low-income housing that we help build, or whether there's other sort of programs. So we don't have all of our eggs in one basket, but I think Rescue Mission has done great work. I even talked to councilmember Poyer today, who was out in Old Station on Technology Way and those other places, and feel like we're providing good services to those that need it. And so I feel like, and we anticipated that there was going to be changes to this contract when we first adopted it, because we were going maybe faster than the Rescue Mission was prepared to go. So super excited about where we're headed, and obviously, we need to do more, but I think we've made good progress in the last two months.
And the great thing about this review that was done, thanks to the finance director, is that it shows we have the capacity to do what, you know, we have proposed this year. At the end of December, we'd still have roughly $948,000. The goal is to maintain 15% to 25% in reserve. 25% reserve would be about $500,000, so we're in a healthy position. But then by the end of 2023, we'd be up to $1,474,000. Next year, we're updating our homeless plan, and it gives us an opportunity for the two cities and the task force, and with public input and with the providers, to really look at a strategic plan for the use of these additional dollars going forward in partnerships. Because the whole idea originally was that we address the unsheltered, the need for low-barrier shelters for the unsheltered. That's what these programs do. And then the second phase was to evaluate how we can assist with placing these individuals into permanent housing.
So any questions for Glenn, or comments? Yeah, I feel like we're doing the right thing here.
I think it's an excellent plan.
What's that? Any questions for Glenn? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move to accept the revisions to the proposed contract with the Wenatchee Rescue Mission noted in staff's presentation, and authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for the amount of $2,090,554.36.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Harold, second by councilmember Cuevas. You two sounded alike to me. To accept the revisions to the proposed contract with the Wenatchee Rescue Mission noted in staff's presentation, authorize the mayor to enter into a contract for the amount of Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
We have one public hearing item tonight. That would be regarding our property tax ordinance. So for purposes of public hearings, we'll hear from staff, we'll ask staff questions, we'll turn over the public for any comment they wish to make to the council, and then over to the council for any action they may be willing to take. So, Mr. Posenjack, I'll turn it over to you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Brad Posenjack, Finance Director. The city council each year is required to adopt a property tax levy and report that, or certify that to the county assessor. This year, the property tax ordinance that we have for you is the most simple that our city council has seen for two decades. The last 20 years, we've had the regular levy and the bond levy, and then on occasion, we've had accessing bank capacity. But this year, we are just taking the 1% maximum. We only have the regular levy. We don't have the bond levy anymore. That was satisfied last year. And so we are just adopting the regular levy and just the 1% plus new construction as allowed by state law.
This is all built into our budget. These are the numbers you've used for budget adoption next Thursday. So, yeah, I think the simple part of this is we're just taking the 1% plus new construction, which is all that we're allowed to take under the Hyman Initiative in terms of increases. Obviously, the cost to government is going up faster than 1%, but our property tax is limited to that. Any questions for Brad? Any members of the audience wish to address the city council on our property tax ordinance? Seeing no takers. I will turn it over to the council for any action they may be willing to take.
Your Honor, I make a motion for the city council to approve ordinance Number 2022-27, authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the 2023 tax year.
Second.
We have a motion by councilmember Kula, second by councilmember Roger Nostetian, to adopt ordinance 2022-27, authorizing an increase in the regular property tax levy to be collected in the 2023 tax year. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Brad.
Thank you.
And a presentation regarding the 2023 budget document. So adoption is scheduled for next...
For next Thursday.
Next Thursday. So this will be our final overview before you're asked to make a vote next week.
Yep. So two weeks ago, I believe it was two weeks ago, last council meeting, I presented a budget over, or maybe I provided a budget document, and that document has not changed since then. We haven't had any updates, and we don't plan on having any updates between now and next Thursday either. What I wanted to do was give a quick, I'll keep it quick, walkthrough of the budget document. We had, I had printed out a few back there for anybody who wanted them here tonight. And then what I also wanted to mention is that this draft budget document is also available on our website within two clicks. I guess a hover and a click. If you go to the city of Wenatchee's website and hover over Government, then you can click on Budget and Finance, and then click on the 2023 draft budget, and you will find the document that I'm going to quickly, quickly overview. At the beginning of the document, we've got some intro information, such as how we came up with the budget, our financial policies, org charts, and then even some staffing trends. Then we move into, this will be the official, the official numbers part of the budget that you'll adopt next week, and it has each fund, the city adopts at the fund level, and rather than getting into very specific details, we still have the details aside and available. It's just easier to adopt at the fund level for auditing and legal purposes. So this has, the city has 42 different funds, and the general fund is by far the largest. And so after the introductory section, we move into the, focusing on the general fund. We do have a long-term projection for the general fund, and based on some of the, some of the capital expenses we know we have in the next couple of years, and then given some, hopefully, conservative estimates on revenues and expenses, we can project and show our reserve balance that's projected out. We've got a few years of actuals presented, so you can see what's happened over the last few years. And again, we feel like this is a pretty conservative projection going out. The details on the projection are also included in the budget document. Then we also have an overview of the general fund, revenues and expenses. The revenues detail our major revenue sources, property tax that you just approved, sales tax, utility taxes, building planning permits. It's got all our budget estimates for 2023 for our revenues in the general fund. Then we also have our general fund expenses by department, and we get into more detail in those in the following sections. At the end of this, at the end of this general fund chart, we show our, what we, we like to focus in the general fund on the recurring budget, as I know you've heard many times before, and our, we want to make sure that our recurring budget balances. These are our recurring revenues. We don't want to have one-time revenues that we get and we hire employees based on these one-time revenues that are going to go away. We want to make sure that these are ongoing revenues when we're adding ongoing expenses. So we try to balance, we try to balance this budget when we have, when we adopt it. As you'll see, 2020, it was very close, our budget, or sorry, 2022, our budget was very close in being balanced. This year, we've got a slight negative, but for all purposes, this is a balanced budget. What you'll notice in 2019, 2020, and 2021, the budget was built to break even. And what actually happened is in 2019, in the actuals you see, we grew by two-plus million dollars. I'm not sure we'll grow by two-plus million dollars in 2023, but we will, with this budget that we currently have, it will grow. The reason is because we still conservatively estimate our revenues, so I can almost guarantee you, as this happened every other year since 2008, we will beat our revenue projections. And on our expenses, we legally cannot spend more than what we adopt in our budget, so we are going to spend less than those budgeted expenses. So when this plays out, having a negative $100,000 in our recurring is not actually going to be a negative $100,000 when the budget actually plays out.
Any projection on 2022? Have you thought about the net reoccurring budget number? Is there going to be a... Is it going to be a million dollars, million and a half dollars?
I'm guessing, I'm guessing it will be, yeah, I'm thinking it'll be at least $2 million.
Again?
Again. Yeah. I've actually been looking at our overall fund balance, where it's going, because we are spending some of our reserves in 2022. That's why I had to think about it for a second or two. Yes, I imagine it will be, it'll be, it'll be strong again. After that section, after that overview, we get into the details of the general fund, and we've got all the different general fund departments. I have the finance department, we're part of the general fund, and I threw that up here, just because I didn't want to offend any other departments by putting their details up and up on the big screen. So this, this gets into the details. If you want to know, we've got budget notes for changes from the prior year to this year. Any significant changes are noted in these, in the more detailed departmental areas. At the end of the general fund section, we've got a, we have all the one-time requests that were requested on the general fund. Some of these are, are part of larger capital projects. We have a few, the largest one that you'll see, I guess I'll call out the Parks Department. Largest one you see is the city pool liner replacement. That's part of a larger capital project, but that's what, at this point in time, the city has committed from the general fund. So these are several different requests. These were all discussed at Finance Committee and approved by Finance Committee, and I think have also been presented to the council in one form or another since then. After that, we get into the details of all the other 41 funds of the city. So we've got the general fund that we spend a lot of time focusing on, but we do have 41 other funds that have our street programs, our utility programs. So those come after with a similar detail and similar explanation of changes between 2022 and 2023. And then finally, towards the end of the budget document, we have all of our capital projects summarized. I didn't actually count how many capital projects we're budgeting for next year, but it's, I think it's, I think it's close to 50, either we're starting, finishing, or in the middle of. So it's a big, large capital budget, but we have the details in there and with the funding sources and, oh, I guess that was it.
The computer went gone.
That's right. I know, that was last slide. I just didn't realize that. So yeah, I don't know if you have any questions about the budget document or the budget between now and next week.
I will tell you this, in looking at other budgets, all government entities do them different. I do like the way ours rolls. I like seeing all the different revenue pieces. I look at other budgets and I just put tax revenue. How much is property? How much is, oh, no, we're not telling you that. We're just going to tell you how much tax revenue we're getting. You're very detailed about which buckets it's coming from and how we come up with the numbers. So I, I appreciate the way this flows and reads and something that we can follow, which we do follow at the Finance Committee, starting in January. Any questions for Brad?
I just, I'd like to voice some concerns. So I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that we're in a period right now where inflation is quite high. We're seeing the cost of building materials go through the roof, and with so many capital projects on the horizon, I can't think of a capital project we've done recently that hasn't gone way over budget. I don't know if we've built those kind of margins in there, but I'm very concerned about that. I'm also still a little concerned about adding some additional positions. I know implementing your new software is going to be an intense project. I get that government overcomplicates things and requires that, where a standard business could do it with one person and a spreadsheet, but I'm a little more comfortable with that than I am with another HR position. And I, I know I've had a visit with a few people, I've talked to the mayor about it. I'm, I'm still reluctant at that position without knowing more about what goes on in our HR department. So those are my concerns. I just want to voice them now.
Anybody else have any other comments? So no action items tonight?
Nope.
And we will be having a public hearing item? Is it a public hearing next?
Yes, I believe it's a public hearing next week.
Next Thursday to adopt the budget, in whatever form the council chooses. Okay. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Mayor's Report. So a couple of three things. Obviously, next week's going to be a super busy week for the mayor's office. We are having our employee breakfast, is it eight o'clock on Monday morning?
Door's open at 7:30.
So if any of the council members want to come have employee breakfast with us, we will be doing that. I am hosting along with Mayor Crawford and Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Wilkinson, and then Sasha from the County, Coffee and Commerce, Regarding Homelessness, Wednesday morning, 8:00 AM at PIBUS. So I will be there. Someone from the police department will be there, Scott will be there, Scott Johnson for the Rescue Mission. So we will have a sort of an overview of where things are at, where the money's coming from and the programs that we're working on. We also have the WDA Dinner next Wednesday. I don't know if you've all let Linda know, but make sure she's aware that if you're coming or not.
Your Honor, I won't be able to attend.
Okay, yeah. And then we do have our interim control open house at 5:15 next Tuesday, so I will be here for that as well. That will be in this building.
Yep.
Next Thursday, of course, will be our ribbon cutting at 4:30 out in front. And we're not really doing tours, but we're going to have a little presentation. I think we'll have the lighting system working by then, so that'll be sort of fun. And then we'll have a regular city council meeting. We do have exec session next week, so I think we'll do exec session at the end of the meeting, just to give us a chance to sort of get to see the new building. I don't want to rush us through that process and then have to run into exec session. So I think we will do exec session at the end of the meeting. I wouldn't expect any council, or council action afterwards, but we do have to go into exec session next Thursday, and we'll do that after, after the meeting. Laura, help me out with other stuff that I'm missing.
On the 16th, we are doing tours. So if you, as the mayor mentioned, the 17th is the ceremony, the ribbon cutting, the celebratory speeches, but on the 16th, at 11:30, 12:15, and 1:00 PM, the public is welcome to come to City Hall, and we would tour them around the building, and you can ask questions and see some of the different spaces. Other than that, I believe I forward you the invite for tonight as well, but would welcome the city council, as well as any of the public, down to the Merck or the NCW Equity Alliance's welcoming reception for their new executive director, Oscar. That's going on right now from 6:00 to 8:00, if anyone's open to go afterwards as well.
Yeah, now I'm going to run up to the, Police Academy's giving their awards tonight, so I'll run up to the high school and do those with the Police Academy folks. Councilmembers, anything on your committee assignments?
The open house for our homeless is next Tuesday.
It is the interim control. So the, the open house is related to the land use decisions that you made at our last meeting, when you basically said, in our zoning code, we will allow safe parks. Okay? And when you do that, as an interim control, then we are required to have a public open house, if you will. So that is next Tuesday at 5:15 in this room. And I will be here, and Laura will be here, and I think Glenn will be here, and so we'll be well represented here.
I'll be.
Yeah.
And.
It'll also be a good time for the public to find out more about why.
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
I think, I think it's going to be a great opportunity for the public to get it.
Yeah, so between the Tuesday night and then the Coffee and Commerce Wednesday morning, we'll have two and a half hours or so of, of time to explain what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Also, at our Masala meeting last week, I confirmed that you would be going, and Mark would be going, and they wanted to know if your spouse was going as well.
My spouse will not be going.
Okay.
Mark, Mark will be my spouse.
There are almost, we can only take 15 to 20 this year.
Okay.
And we don't know if we're going to be staying in homes or at the International Center.
Okay.
Looks like we may be, you may be staying at the International Center, just simply because people, because of COVID are nervous about taking people in, so.
Probably a safer bet. Yeah. Jose, anything, Michael?
Yesterday, we, I attended the Shland Douglas Homeless Task Force. There's been a lot of good information. What I really liked about it is all the entities or the nonprofit organizations were getting really involved and helping get all the details and information to the, to the homeless. I have a lot, a big list, but I'm just, I just want to say that the, that the team was really active and really going and getting other, the plans done for the homeless. We were talking about the shelters, the safe parks, the transitions, hotels and motels, and also that it's, did a housing strategic plan for the, for the next five years. So it's, it's been going, a big information, a lot of info for the, for all the entities. They're also going to get together with the Columbia River Task, you see, so that way they will double up on their situation happening. I think that's about it.
Great, thanks, Jose. And Michael?
I went to the Shland Douglas Transportation Council meeting, and there's a Legislature for Freight Mobility Strategic Investment Board, never heard of them. But the good news is, they're meeting next week. As you know, we're like, we committed to $10 million extra for Confluence, that was our contribution, and we're ranked number two for the McKittrick Miller, which would help that. And Commissioner Overbay also brought into the group to realize that we need this, and so he's, he's backing to help get our money. It's a $7.8 million that we're going to try to do, and we should find out here shortly. So that's all positives.
Our rail underpasses have graded very high at the state and national level.
This is from FIMSWIM?
Yep, 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 yep. Yeah, so hopefully, we'll find out pretty quickly whether we get that, and that'll help cover some of the underpass costs. Top? Travis, anything?
Not just that, Shland Douglas Community Action Council's still working their capital campaign, but really grateful for the city's contribution.
Mark, anything?
Nope, next week's the busy week.
Yep. It is the busy week, yep.
Museum, link, finance.
Yep.
LTAC sometime? Are we done with LTAC for the year?
No, there's one in December.
You could probably not have one in December if you get rid of it.
No, we need to, we do need that one.
Yeah, we do.
Keith, anything from you?
No updates.
All right, everybody, so we will see you next week on multiple different occasions, and if not for any of those, for the ribbon cutting at 4:30 and for our council meeting at 5:00 PM, so, or 5:15. With that, we're adjourned.